As we call on Pastor Doug Dent, Federated Church for this evening's invocation.
Let us pray. Dear wise and loving God, first we pause to say thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here today. We thank you for the many and abundant blessings on each one of us and on this community. We thank you for life itself, the measure of health we need to fulfill our callings, for sustenance, for friendship. We thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. We thank you for those whose service is ending. We thank you especially for the dedicated work of Mayor Hal Leland and Councilmember Wayne Hurley. Most of all, we thank you for the boundless love and gracious nature you extend to us. In Scripture you tell us that citizens ought to obey the governing authorities, since you've established those very authorities to promote peace and order and justice. Therefore, we pray today for our new mayor, Ben Shire, and for the members of our city council. We pray for the various levels of city officials and our emergency responders. We pray that you would graciously grant to them wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times, a sense of the welfare and the true needs of the people, a keen thirst for justice and righteousness, hearts of compassion for the people they serve, confidence in doing what is good and right, the ability to work together in harmony even where there's disagreement, and a personal peace in their lives and joy in their tasks. We pray for the agenda before this council tonight. Give these members assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in and around our beloved city of Fergus Falls. All this we pray in your most blessed name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the routine justice for all.
We will call this January 3rd, 2017, City Council Meeting to Order. Roll call, please.
Here.
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 We have a quorum. Item C on the agenda is approval of the agenda, and I'll ask Andrew Bremseth if we have any additions or...
We don't. All right? Good to go for the first time.
I have a question.
Your Honor.
Yes?
And having traveled around the world and seen that when we do certain... Some communities do things regularly, again and again, it seems like it's the thing they should do. However, as I look at... And this issue was raised two years ago. When I look at the way we seat our new council members and that the charter does not provide for them to serve, that I see in 2017, it says that the elected members shall assume their duties at the first regular meeting of the council in January. I'm going to recommend that we seat the new members so they can do business in 2017, which would mean just changing the agenda to have the old council say goodbye and to swear in and seat the new council and let them take care of the meeting. I think we have a tradition that doesn't really make sense. I don't know anywhere elected officials don't begin their duties at their first meetings in January except the Fergus Falls City Council.
What is your wish? Someone move to adopt the present agenda or to change what is being suggested?
I'd like to move to alter the agenda so that we swear in the new members and seat them and then continue on with the meeting.
Is there a second?
I'll second that, Your Honor.
Darren?
I've got a question for all. Is that something that's not in our charter and is this something we can... It's just the way it's been done all over these years. That's what is changing it, what it is.
Yeah, I have no problem. You can do it either way. I mean, you're at liberty to take action because you're a quorum now, but if that's what you would like to do, you can certainly seat the new members and resume the business of the day. Either approach is acceptable in my mind.
Any comments, concerns, issues?
I'll just state for the record, Your Honor, it's fine with me. I'm one of the only... You and I are the only two impacted by it, so.
I kind of like the way we've been doing it, Your Honor. Any other comments? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Motion is carried. What is the protocol?
Well, the protocol would be to swear in the new members at this time.
All right.
And we can do that. And so the new members, I would ask that you come forward to the front. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to show support, please come forward as well, and we can swear in the new members and they can take their seats.
This is the other thing I didn't like is that we waited so long that all the families had to sit through our handouts. Here we are.
You can't sit in the back room.
Well, welcome. Okay. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Jim Finch.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
I will support the Constitution of the State of Minnesota.
And the laws and ordinances of the city of Fergus Falls.
And the laws and ordinances of the city of Fergus Falls.
And faithfully discharge.
And faithfully discharge.
The duties of mayor or city council member.
The duties of the city council member.
To the city of Fergus Falls, State of Minnesota.
To the city of Fergus Falls, State of Minnesota.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
To the best of my judgment and ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Congratulations to our new mayor and city council at this point. Am I excused then to just go into the audience?
You're excused, Mayor, and I do think that we should take a moment to pause to thank you for your service and give you a round of congratulations.
You want me to...
Okay. Okay, well then, let's move to that.
So, Your Honor, on behalf, Mayor, of the city of Fergus Falls, the city council, and all the residents of Fergus Falls, I just want to take this opportunity to say thank you for your remarkable service to our community. To me personally, you have been a trusted friend, colleague, and mentor. To the city of Fergus Falls, you've been a tireless ambassador, supporter, and a true champion. Please accept this plaque as a small token of appreciation from the city of Fergus Falls and recognition of your dedication and stewardship, boundless years, to the city of Fergus Falls. Thank you.
It's a privilege, and I thank you all. We have a great future to look forward to with our council and new mayor. Go for it. Thank you.
So we will call this meeting of the 2017 City Council to order. Do we need a new roll call?
Probably should.
Roll call, please.
Fish.
Here.
Arnison.
Yes.
Hurley.
Oh, I'm sorry. (Laughter). Want to start older?
Yeah.
Arnison.
Here.
Thompson.
Here.
Speedo.
Here.
Hicks.
Here.
Apple.
Here.
Fish.
Here.
Rachel.
Here.
Hoover.
Here. We have a quorum.
Next, we will move to the approval of the agenda. And there are no additions to the agenda?
I made that.
Anthony?
I'll second, Your Honor.
Justin?
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign?
Motion carries. There are no public hearings? There are no bids to award? There are no petitions and communications? Is anyone here to speak to the open forum? If so, step to the lectern, state your name and address. Seeing no one, we will move on to the consent agenda. Following are non-controversial items intended to be approved with one motion without discussion. If any council member, citizen, or staff wants to discuss an item, we will remove it and it will be placed elsewhere on the agenda. Item number one, resolution approving the biannual contract between the city of Fergus Falls and business development of Fergus Falls concerning the operation of a community loan program. Item number two, motion to approve minutes from the December 19th, 2016 meeting. Motion... Item number three is a motion to approve licenses, which you all have a copy of on your desk.
And, Mr. Mayor, we do have to add one license this evening. Under sign hanger, there's a permit for sign works that has to be approved as well, so we add that to the list.
Any questions?
On item number one, could we collect some discussion on that?
Sure. We'll remove item number one. There's no discussion on items two and three. Do we have a resolution approving those items?
So moved, Your Honor. Jim, thank you. I'll second that, Your Honor. Darren? Roll call, please.
Arnison.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Speedo.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Apple.
Yes.
Item number one, Anthony wanted some discussion on a resolution approving the biannual contract between the city of Fergus Falls and business development. Gordon, would you like to speak to that?
I just wanted to have the clarification for everybody to know who is the business development of Fergus Falls.
Well, business development of Fergus Falls is a small board of people, first instituted in 1979 with changes personnel. They meet on a quarterly basis at the HRA, where the redevelopment staff do the intake or request for rehabilitation in commercial buildings and industrial buildings. And they make the approvals, and then when those things are done, the city handles the financial paperwork. The business development includes all... At this point, they're all retail businessmen.
Is it possible to have a list of the name of people?
There is. I can get that to the report. I can't name them all, but some are... The Steprin, Rocksevegan, the...
Maybe you could do that, but then I wonder if we could kind of get a sort of regular update on what it does.
Sure.
You know, maybe quarterly or...
Yeah.
Quarterly would be good.
Because we have a quarterly meeting, and the same materials are produced every month in anticipation of that. Just to point out in your memo, and this would be good for the TV public, you know, the project started in 1979, and in that time, $7,380,780 had been loaned, 502 businesses have been assisted. As of November 30th, 2016, there are 53 existing loans totaling $659,988, and currently available, $430,000. We advertise that on an annual basis, and the rehabilitation inspector makes contacts during that time.
Bill?
Maybe, Gordon, you just want to let them know that each one of those loans comes through their resolution of accounts that you have when you're paying the bills, those issuances of loans, and there's a couple of them in there tonight. So each one is flowing through your packets, too. It's under the CDBG HUD revolving loan fund, right?
Yes, and it has mutated a little bit over the years. The initial funding for it was a '79 block grant from the federal government, $300,000 to cede that. In 1982, additional $300,000 to cede it. And then at the end of that '82 grant, we had some administration money and some multiple housing money available, and so we blended it into those funds, and it's been operating since that time. It initially was only downtown businesses excluding apartments. And then later on, when we found that we weren't handling the total problem of buildings, we included the apartments and downtown buildings, and then later decided that it's been successful enough that we allow it to be used in all business areas and industrial areas of the city. We got a real good history, loaning history. Yes.
Your Honor?
Yeah, just to be specific, I had the same question. Could we include the names of the board members in the minutes? I tried to look online to find this, and I couldn't find anything. And therefore, we'd have, since they serve the city in a public capacity, kind of, you know, nonprofit, I'd like us to have that listed in the minutes?
I believe we can have that for the minutes.
Thank you.
Is this agreement time sensitive, Gordon? Is it something...
Well, actually, it's a little late.
Okay.
We discovered it about a week and a half ago that it was supposed to run out. They had noticed it themselves, and so we... That's why we went forward.
Could I ask them, why is the contract biannual? Why can't we make it an annual contract?
We could, if that's your wish.
I mean, it just seems...
Yeah, I'm not even sure, you know, since '83, when I started doing this, it's always been a two-year contract. And for a while, it was a little bit more informal, and then there was questions of all that... See, I'm trying to think how that went. All of money was used outside of their discretion because it's your money, and it's been your money all along, and it's identified for that type of a program. But you could bring that money back and operate it out of the city. You could take that money back and use it for community development activity. But you have one of the longest-standing downtown loan programs in the state, and a lot of jealousy related to it. We're very lucky to have it.
One other question, Your Honor. And I notice in our charter, you know, allows for regular audits of our finances, et cetera. Does the BDOF and this loan come under that process, and so that is included?
Yeah, from an audit standpoint, these funds are within the city of Fergus Falls coffers, so it's part of total city funding that is under council control, so it does fall under our audit as well.
Okay, thanks.
And then the HRA side, they do the admin management.
They do the management of the construction and make sure that the things are spent for what they said they would be spending. We get it. We receive the payments monthly, and we make sure that people live up to their commitments to us. The program itself is basically broken into two. One is 12 years, 4% money, up to, right now, $50,000 a project. And the other is $10,000, 43 months of balloon payment at the end, 0% interest for facades and signs. And over the years, they've tested some things. For example, we tested a signed grant program for a while. That mutated into the 0% facade and sign program. So they do test things. Right now, they're talking about green roofs, wind power, and solar, and coordinating with somebody at Otter Tail Power to see how we might do some projects like that.
Just in light of understanding how this can be used or adapted to the city and with some new council members, I would recommend that we move that... Or I would move that we amend this, we leave it as is, but we amend it to a 12-month period, leaving the... Can we do it retroactive? Is that okay without changing the... Since it is late already presented, it says January 1 on here.
Well, you know, it's going back to January 1, so you can certainly amend it and do it one year.
Yeah, I would recommend we do that.
Offer resolution for one-year contract?
Yeah.
I would second that.
Second. Anthony? Any other discussion from the council? If not, roll call.
Arnison.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Speedo.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Apple.
Yes.
Resolution is approved. Under ordinances and resolutions, April's going to discuss a resolution declaring items property at 1115 North Oak Street, 502 South Sheridan, and 315 East Vasa as surplus property.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmen. As you're aware, these are properties that the city has recently acquired and owned. Prior to demolition, there are some structures and some items of value that we would like to sell to recuperate across the demolition, and to do so, we have to declare them surplus. So that is the request this night, this evening, by this resolution.
Any questions, April? Would it be through an auction, or is that...
It would be through auctions, like we've done.
The regular auctions, the auctions? Questions for you?
I will offer that, Your Honor.
Jim, thank you. Just a second. Scott, thank you. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Arnison.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Speedo.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Apple.
Yes.
Under presentation of claims tonight, we have claims in the amount of $748,990.30. Any questions? We'll direct those to Bill Sonmore, Finance Director. Not to a resolution.
I'll offer that, Your Honor.
Thank you, Darren.
I'll second you.
Thank you, Anthony. Roll call.
Arnison.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Apple.
Yes.
Under Board Committee and Department reports, item K1 is discussion of a resolution granting a variance to Julia Evansen, I'm sorry, at 1204 South Sherman to allow a reduced setback of 15 feet in lieu of 150 feet setback from the high water mark in an R1 zone. April, are you going to assess this?
It is recommendation of the board of zoning to approve this. It meets all the practical difficulties tests. As you can see, it would fall in line with the neighboring properties that would not detract. Julia's trying to sell this property, and one hangup has been to allow for a detached accessory structure in proximity to the body of water there. So she's asking for a reduced setback, and again, the board of zoning felt that this met the practical difficulty test to approve and make the recommendation.
Any questions from the council?
I should also note, this has been reviewed by Julia Adlin with the DNR, and she indicated that, you know, issues on their side with the DNR and we're granting this variance.
Thank you, April.
I will laud for that, Charlie.
Jim, thank you. Is there a second?
Yeah.
Second.
Rod, thank you. Roll call, please.
Arnison.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Speedo.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Apple.
Yes.
Second item is also a recommendation from the board of zoning regarding a resolution granting a variance to John and Susan McDonaldan at 639 West Beach to allow an accessory structure to be constructed in the side yard in lieu of a rear one-third of the lot and reduce setback on the west front yard of five feet in lieu of the required 30-foot setback.
And again, this was reviewed by the board of zoning, the practical difficulty test, and they still wish to grant this and made this recommendation to the council this evening. Again, the parcel in question is on a corner lot. Due to existing setbacks, you use a string test to get the setbacks. If you wanted more of a setback, closer proximity, you would be abandoning the driveway on the north side of the lot and having a driveway on the west side.
Any questions, April? If not, is there a resolution?
I made that resolution.
Thank you. Justin, thank you. Questions? Roll call, please.
Arnison.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Speedo.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Apple.
Yes.
Resolution is approved. And finally, number three is also from the board of zoning, I believe.
Planning Commission.
Planning Commission, I'm sorry. It's a demotion direct in the city attorney to draft an ordinance rezoning a parcel property located on the south end of Martin Street from RA to R2 as requested by Pearson Homes.
This area may be familiar to you. We had a request for rezoning in this area before. This parcel does not have any covenances, which, again, I should state, the city does not enforce. It's up to the developer. It currently is zoned RA, which is a traditional holding pattern. Before it's determined use is decided, and the developer is wishing to develop in an R2 zoning development, which is one and two family residential.
So the, April, if I remember correctly, this is in the same neighborhood that the planning commission recommended not to change the others to R2, correct?
Correct, but the rezoning was... On that one was from R1 to R2. This is from RA to R2. It has not been developed or parceled on at this time.
And one other thing, this is in the 2030 plan.
So this was agreeable to the planning commission?
Yes.
April, could I just clarify, is that the blue...
That kind of lazy, blue aqua area is the area, right off of Martin, you come down, and the development is...
And then the city dump is just kind of below it to the south, right?
Land.
Yes, land, sorry.
You will see the development again when it's platted for R2 zoning and development.
Your Honor, just a concern by a resident in my ward, and the concern is that we've allowed this road to be not completed all the way to the end, and this zoning request may, in fact, affect her in terms of completing that road and causing an assessment, which she felt was a great burden for her. So I don't... And I believe that was in the... That was raised in the planning commission.
It was raised, I mean, referred it, Gordon, and Brian, in regards to the assessments on how it would affect her.
Right. And just to note, the consideration was made for those residents. We requested not to complete... Not to extend the road that far, and we did allow that, and this would affect that, so...
Your Honor, April, the letters went out to all the people the last time they were here. Were there any objections this time through?
There was no objections, just a lot of inquiries and questions, like, constantly speedo is brought up.
Okay.
Again, I should indicate, this is the first process. We rezon, and then this developer will have to come through with his plating and his design for the plat and the subdivision of this lot, to give better guidelines for how assessments
Could you explain, I don't see on the map where the, there were two road options. One was from the north. Could you please show us where that is?
So, here's the MICA, heading northwest, this is east, this is Martin, that's north, this is south. So, it'd be coming through here in Kelly Court, and eventually move around here is one of the proposed layouts for this plat. So, this is where it's dubbed in right now. And wrapping around eventually to have seventeen lots.
So, it is possible, if I could ask another question. It is possible that a road access could be created that didn't necessarily extend Martin all the way to the end? Is that true?
We could talk with the developer, but the base drawing that they were using from about, I want to say 12 to 15 years ago, shows that road connection that April mentioned, and then another loop from that curving road down further south toward that boundary line and that road coming out to Martin. So, we'd have two roads coming out to Martin, which would mean an extension of Martin further south.
Right.
And I haven't had a chance to talk to Brian yet about what a assessment might do to someone that's holding a 10-acre RA's area and intending to live on that 10 acres themselves. We haven't had a chance to talk about that. But that's different than zoning.
Yeah, and I think it would be good for us, Your Honor, to have that information as to the options, because I live down there and walk across that parcel quite often. And to extend a full street to the end seems to me like overkill when you can actually bring in the road from Martin and not have to go all the way to the end. So, just a point.
That's a good point, and April and I are, have the ability of talking to the developer as they do their preliminary and final plat. And, you know, they again will, as long as they legally meet the rules of our plating process, they may bring something that you like, and they may bring something that is less desirable to you. And at that time, you can make a decision. We will point out those suggestions.
Thank you.
When we do this, obviously in that area, because obviously I also live kind of in that area, there's placement for kind of footpaths, but we never make developers put in footpaths. How do we, how do we, you know, we want to encourage people to, you know, bike and walk, or walk and bike, you know? When we do this, can we start to kind of push more that some of these amenities, like footpaths, get placed in developments?
Yes.
Because we make people, you know, we cut somebody's drive up, you know, they lay the driveway, and then we may take it out to put in the footpath, but we never have a footpath. So, it's kind of a moot point.
And you're talking sidewalks rather than pathways.
Sidewalk.
Okay. Yeah, I was going on footpath.
A footpath would be something. A sidewalk, yeah.
Yeah, you know, you've made some decisions years ago about whether or not that you will require sidewalks. You require sidewalk sections in each driveway, and they can be connected. There was some opposition to that in the past. There may be renewed interest in that now and something that you could discuss. As to like pathways through neighborhoods, you know, when we have a planned unit development and somebody's asking us for increased density in an R4 zone, we then can ask them for a path connection, and we do. If they're asking us for tax abatement or tax increment financing, we do. I think the other could have a discussion, since that discussion was about 20, it's got to be 20 to 22 or three years ago, when they decided that only on primary, what are those called? Major arterials, that would be on one side or the other. And so, I'll pick on my neighborhood, Hillside West. Every one of us has a driveway sidewalk section, but we don't connect. But we also have a sidewalk connection through an area that divides two cul-de-sacs, Hillside East and Hillside West. So, people who are walking on, in the street until they get to that divider, they cross on a sidewalk, and then they're walking in the street. I think it's a good, future discussion.
I think so, too. Bring that to a public works discussion. In the meantime, what is the wishes of the council regarding the motion to resolve this parcel of land?
Your Honor, what's the timeframe? If we were to discuss it in public works with some of the options, is that going to be a great hardship on, like, two weeks? Is that...
Well, I can't speak for the developer, and I don't know that he's, he's not here.
There's a 60-day timeframe from when a complete application is made in which the council needs to take action on this and make a determination. So, we need to make sure that we're within that 60-day timeframe.
Yeah, we have the 60-day rule. And you are introducing it, and then you're having a second reading. In the second reading, you either pass it or you don't pass it. Again, for zoning, this is the ideal zoning. In the past, it has been approached as an R4 area, but that, because Martin is the type of street it is, it's not like Cascade, and it's not like Cleveland, and it's not like Lincoln and Vernon. Because Cask, Martin is such more of a neighborhood street, we don't like putting multiple housing on the end of something like that, but single density we do. Your Honor. Just to note, the action in front of you tonight is just to direct the City Attorney to draft this ordinance, so we could, we could move forward with that and still be able to debate the merits of that decision and have time to vote that yes or no. But it would also help us, or amend, right? But it'd help us comply with that 60-day timeframe and move things forward in that direction.
Yeah, I was going to maybe suggest the same, similar, is just that we accept it, but with the instructions to staff to give us the options on that.
We can always amend the ordinance.
Yeah.
Well, you're simply just wanting me to draft you a proposed ordinance for the next meeting, and if you like it, you can introduce it. If you don't like it, you don't have to.
Sure. Thank you.
Jim? I will offer the motion. Thank you. Second? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Same. Motion carries.
One thing about 60-day rule. You have 60 days from when they make their application, and if you don't do it within 60 days or take action or make any kind of action, it automatically goes their way. Their request is automatically approved. And so, sometimes we can skirt that when they withdraw their application. That's just an education.
Thank you, Gordon. Next. On the agenda, under reports from staff and administrative officers, we're going to have a discussion concerning the 2017 lobbyist contract with Joel Carlson. There's also been a new proposal that's been presented today. So, Andrew, do you want to take that?
Yeah. Thank you, Your Honor, Members of the Council. Before you tonight, you have two proposals for the 2017 legislative session, lobbying efforts for the Regional Treatment Center. I approached Mr. Joel Carlson, who's been a lobbyist for the city for the past 14 years and has worked on this since its inception, to provide a proposal. And he's done so, which is in your packets, but it mirrors the proposal that he provided last year as well. The sum would be $32,000, $16,000 upfront, and then $285 per month from June to December, equalling the $32,000. None of the terms of that proposal have changed from current year, last year, 2016. And then the other proposal in front of you is from Hilden Advocacy and Law, and Councilmember Speedall was the one who reached out to Ms. Hilden to provide that proposal. And in briefly looking at that, she breaks it up into two parts of work. Part number one is during the legislative session, that would be similar to what Joel's proposal was, to work through the legislative process, working closely with legislators in St. Paul and advocating on the city's behalf. And then she also proposes a part two, which is after the legislative session in 2017, from June to December, working on that bonding bill request for 2018 that we've talked about in the past, which are due October of 2017. And her fees are, for part one during the legislative session is $25,000, which is[1101.04][1101.05]$5,000 per month over five months. And then part two, $21,000 total, $3,000 during interim session, seven months outside of the legislative session. So, those are the two proposals in front of us tonight. Session started today, so there is some urgency to get things rolling, but I know a few of you have expressed interest in letting this issue sit until the next committee meeting next week, and I think we'd be okay with that. But I do also want to make a decision if the council feels comfortable tonight. So, those are the two proposals in front of us to consider, and I'd be open for questions.
Rod, go ahead.
Just a clarification question on that. In speaking to Ms. Hilden about the proposal, the two parts are not intended to have to be connected. That is, they're meant as two options. It could be, to be accepted either both, or you could accept one and then wait on the other. So, you could accept the $25,000 and then wait to see how the efforts go, and then adjust the other part of it, or take it or leave it, the second part. So, it gives us that option. The other clarification was that this would be a priority for that consulting firm lobbyist, and also that the library would be available as, to go with that. So, for an additional $1,000, the library would be done as well. The bonding, which would involve probably a one-off or a one-time event for us, maybe, but they would be willing to take that on. So, just so that's clarified, and if they want to pass it on to the public works, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure we knew all the details.
I just, I guess I would think that, one second, Scott. My, what you're going to say, I think that, you know, out of respect for the new members, Tom and Brent, I mean, this is some, you know, if we can, if time permits us to send this to public works, I think that would be in our best interest to give everyone a chance to consider these two proposals. Yes, Jim?
Andrew, will Joel continue to work without a contract for this first two weeks, or...
I believe so. I spoke to Joel this afternoon just to let him know that there was a new proposal available, but he indicated, his response was, I've worked for the city for 14 years, many of those without a contract, but I've always advocated for the city for this fall, so I would like to think so. But I also don't believe there will be any activity on a bonding bill in the next two weeks, but I, you know, it's unpredictable in St. Paul, as you all know.
I would hope not that quickly.
But I wouldn't be comfortable extending this beyond the next council meeting, otherwise we might as well go without it.
And we don't know at this point what, other than just what Joel said as far as the library part of this too, so.
I posed that question to Joel as well, out of fairness, and his response was, I would have to understand, you know, what that entails to do your fair price. He said it's, it could be a quick thing, and it would be cheaper, it could be more expensive thing. I did pull a history from the arena, Bill pulled it for me. Joel lobbied on the arena sales tax, and we paid him $33,000 over a two-year period for that. So, that would be, you know, 16.5 a year to do those services.
Scott, did you have a...
Well, I just wanted to clarify, if we do go with her, we'll spend $46,000 plus the $1,000. So, it'll be $47,000 roughly, and if we go with...
Not necessarily, because like Rod said.
But if we go with her, because we're going to look at that bonding bill in the 18, I mean, that's hands down, we know that's going to happen. We have to look at something for that. So, I believe we're going to be going with that. So, I'm just kind of trying to get the numbers off here before we go, and I don't want to do anything, and I don't want to push it up.
Sure.
So, but I just want to kind of get them numbers up, because we will be looking for lobbyists for the whole year, I believe.
Any other comments? Is it the consensus that we're going to...
I would say the consensus is move it to the public works. I'd make that, I'd make that motion that we move it to the public works.
Rod, second.
I got one.
Okay.
Just one, Scott. Do you think Joel could give us an answer by the next meeting about the library? Have you looked at the numbers or looked at all the stuff?
I'll ask him to put a proposal together. You know, like I said, session has started, so it might be tough, but I'll, that's a week away, so we should.
Any other questions?
Just are there any other issues of conflict of interest or anything in hiring the lobbyists that, you know, any of us have connections to, that we have to be aware of?
I'll address that. Joel Carlson is a cousin of mine. I have no relationship with him at all. I hadn't seen him for many years till I come into the council six years ago, so I got nothing to do with him. We just know each other.
Good enough. Any other questions, comment? We have a motion on the floor to table this until the Public Works Committee. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Motion carries. There's no old or unfinished business. Under new business, we will briefly go over committee assignments for 2017. Under the new, am I on the new agenda here now? Which is what I was prepared to do. First item would be, we needed a motion to adopt the rules of procedure of the City Council, City Code, Section 2.52.
I'd make that motion.
Anthony, one second. Thank you, Darren. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign, motion carries. Next, we need an appointment to be made by the council, which is the Office of Acting Mayor for 2017.
Your Honor, I'd like to recommend Anthony for that.
Anthony Hicks?
Yep.
We do this by motion, I believe, a motion.
I would move that.
You'd move? Thank you, Rod.
I would second.
Second by Mr. Fish. Thank you, Jim. Any other discussion, any other nominations? If not, we will... All in favor of the... Motion, say aye.
Aye.
All same sign, motion carries. Anthony is the...
I'll abstain.
Any abstentions? Thank you, Anthony. So, Anthony Hicks is the 2017 Acting Mayor. Lynn Olson, this, Lynn Olson will be the Secretary to the Council. I don't believe, that's the point. Do we need a motion on that one? No, that's just the way it is. All right. The Board of Equalization for 2017 will be Jim Fish, Tom Ruffer, Brent Thompson, and Rod Speedall. Finance Personnel Development Committee, Jim Fish will chair that committee. Darren Appert will be Vice Chair, and Tom Ruffer and Anthony Hicks will be members. Public Works and Safety, Rod Speedall will chair that committee. Scott Rachels will be the Vice Chair, and Brent Thompson and Justin Arneson will serve on that committee. The Investment Committee, we Andy Bremseth, Bill Sonmore, Jim Fish, Assistant Finance Director and a Certified Financial Planner. Labor, and that's specified by... Yep, so Sandy Cunningham is our assistant, and then Mike Moshin with the Dance Capital Group. Labor Management Committee is, will be Anthony Hicks and Scott Rachels. Legislative Committee will consist of the Mayor, the City Administrator, Rod Speedall, and Darren Appert. Airport Advisory Board, I'm sorry, the Tax Levy Committee will be the City Administrator, Chair of the Finance Committee, which is Jim Fish and the Mayor.
Your Honor, on that one, I thought a couple of years ago, we added the Chair of the Public Works to the Tax Levy Committee.
I don't think it was ever official. I think we included...
It was never official.
But I think that that's a good suggestion that we could take up at a, I think that could be done by City Code. I think that's in the Code, correct? It's in the Code right now, a member designated by the council. A member, but we could change it to two members. Designated by council. If we wanted to add a person to that committee, it's possible, correct? Yeah, I think it's in the Code. We've got the mid-passing ordinance. But we can look into that.
Okay, thanks.
It'd actually be in the charter. Yeah. Or the appointments, City Council appointments to the Airport Advisory Board will be Anthony Hicks. Community Education will be Rod Speedall. Convention and Visitors Bureau will be Jim Fish. EIC Board will be Ben Shire. Golf Board will again be Scott Rachels. Jim Fish will again be the liaison to the Hockey Board. Human Rights Commission will be Tom Ruffer. Library Board will be Ben Shire. Loan Pool Representative is Justin Arneson. Justin Arneson is also liaison to the Otter Tail County Museum. Peg Access Board will be Brent Thompson. Senior Citizens Board will be Tom Ruffer. West Central Initiative Economic Development will be Darren Appert, and the West Central Initiative Transportation Advisory Committee will be Rod Speedall. Just a couple other notes. There will be the Kirkbride Advisory Committee, the Mayor Hal Leland started last year, will continue. I've made a couple additions. That committee will consist of Hal Leland, Lori Lucky, Lori Mullin, Lois Josephson, Scott Kwame, Scott Demartelair, Randy Sinstallin, Chris Shulkey, and Michelle Anderson. I'm also putting together an Advisory Committee on Natural Resources, which I will bring names. I'm going to let them put together a scope of work and then bring it back to the council for you guys to approve that committee once they've had a chance to meet. I'm also considering putting together a Youth Advisory Committee.
Yeah, just a clarification, Your Honor. The first part is a clarification on the appointment of members of boards and commissions. According to the Charter, you definitely have the right to appoint these members. It says the council will confirm them. So, I understand it'll be done by a motion, perhaps? Is that correct? The second thing is, in the establishment by ordinance or resolution of any regulatory
The second thing is, in the establishment, by ordinance or resolution of any regulatory board or commission to advise the council to any city function, it cites that the council is the active person in that. So could we then have a motion that we recommend, or that we recommend to establish the youth and the environment board commission, so that you then can appoint according? Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does.
Okay.
We'll do that at the, we'll do that, if that makes sense, doesn't it? We'll do that then. I just want to make a couple notes on, I'll just point out some new members joining the city boards commission. Airport Advisory Committee will remain the same. The Arts Commission will remain the same, with the exception of Amy Nordland will be joining that committee. Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee will be, remain the same, with the exception that Emily McCune will be joining that committee. Board of Zoning remains the same as last year. Heritage Preservation Commission remains the same as last year. Human Rights Commission has several new members. Michelle Anderson, Amanda Whitney, Nancy Sanchez, Tim Lit, are all new appointees.
On the heritage preservation, it looks like there wasn't a new member.
I'm sorry, thank you, Justin. Jen Nelson is a new member of the HPC. Thank you for catching up. Library Board will, will remain the same. Park, Rec, and Forestry Board, a couple new members on that. Caroline Gustafson and Tim Engstrom will both be new members of that. On the planning commission, Wayne Hurley will be a new member of the planning commission, along with Ned Erdmans and Ruth Rosengren. Public Safety Board will remain the same, and the Sister City Commission will remain the same. Yes, Andrew?
Your Honor, I pulled up the charter in regards to the Tax Levy Committee question. And Section 7.05 of the Charter states that the Tax Levy Committee is composed of the mayor, city administrator, and a member of the city council appointed by the council. So, so we'd have to amend the chart.
Can I answer that question? Are there any questions about these committee assignments, appointments?
Just a clarification, Your Honor. If I could?
Yeah.
According to the boards and commissions, again, that meet to advise or respect any city function of the council, the council has the right to establish or regulate those boards, right, by ordinance? And that does not include changing the charter, as I read it. That we could say whatever we want to in terms of serving on those committees or boards. We're not effectively changing the charter. We're simply going by what the charter says in 2.06 about boards and commissions can be regulated by the council. So we can add members or not. And I'm asking for a legal.
Well, maybe we could.
Were you talking tax levy?
No, no. I'm talking in general, back to the question earlier. If we want to regulate a board, we can do that. Yeah, okay. And then one more question, Your Honor, if I could.
We'd leave it open to additional appointments to do. If that's the case, then I'm going to, without going to the council, Marta Brown is also going to be on the human rights commission. Without, it's a sixth spot that we don't have. Yes, Rod?
Just a clarification, I don't, I noticed Councilman Thompson has a position, and I, seems the precedent is that council members have two, usually two appointments to some committees in general. What, perhaps?
Transportation Advisory Committee?
Yeah, I mean, perhaps we could add one more, just so you have more experience on.
Can we make that amendment?
Is that right?
Good suggestion, Rod, thank you.
Brent?
Sure.
Is there a comment over here? Okay. Yeah, unfortunately.
All right.
Any other suggestions, comments? If not, do we have a motion to approve, approve these appointments?
I'll make the motion, Your Honor.
Thank you, Tom.
One second.
Thank you, Jim.
The new and the old.
Really, really old.
You notice that Tom's serving on the senior citizens board.
Yeah.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Same sign, motion carries. Only other business needed? Tonight would be a resolution to designate legal publication for 2017. And you have a copy of that resolution in your packets?
Yeah, I'll make that.
Rod, off to that resolution, for a second.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Scott. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes. Yes.
Second would be a resolution to designate depositories for 2017. Again, you have a copy of those in your package. I'll have that. Darren, thank you.
I'll second it this time.
Second, and thank you, Anthony. Any discussion, questions? Now roll call, please.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes. Yes.
Is there any other business to come before this council? If not, I'd like to remind everyone that we'll have a reception in five minutes at Union Pizza Brewing Company. There'll be refreshments served, and come, please come help us thank Mayor Hal Leland for his dedication.
Tonight, there will be a Port Authority meeting immediately after that. Mr. Appert will preside over to elect the new officers. So the people up here will have to hold on a few minutes, but.
I, I just wanted to say, I think that it's not an easy job being an administrative secretary, I'm sure, with all the new council members. And I think, along with appreciation for Hal Leland, we should appreciate Lynn and all her work this year in adjusting to many, a huge turnover in the council, and doing a good job on that. So if we could just give her a thank you in a row.
With that, meeting's adjourned. What did you get me?